Good evening everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning Committee. I'm Jenna Tissot Ocean and I chair the meeting. Before it starts, I have a few announcements to make. In the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly point, which is by the War Memorial on Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know. Please remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return into the building until you've been advised it's safe to do so. The toilets are situated on the landing at the top of the main staircase and on the ground floor in Customer Service Centre. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it. Only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. The meeting is also being broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, please, may I remind the committee to ensure that you turn on your microphone and speak closely into it. A red light will appear on the middle button to indicate that your microphone is switched on. When finished speaking, please remember to turn your microphone off again. Now, shall we move on to apologies for absence?
We don't have anyone chair, everyone's present.
That's great, that's really good. I'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of the 7th of November. Is it your wish that I sign these as a true record? Yep, okay. Declarations of interest. All members are reminded they must disclose any interests they know they have in items of business on the meeting's agenda, and they must do so at this point on the agenda or as soon as they become aware of the interests. Do we have any? We do, councillor Tron.
Item seven.
Sorry?
I have an interest in item seven.
Then you will...
And I'll leave at that point.
So you will leave at that point, yes, thank you. This is a public question time, but usually everyone wishes to speak in relation to their items, so each person will have two minutes and a maximum of 20 minutes would be allotted to public questions if there were any now. Do you have any such?
No, just...
So it would be the individual application. Where an application is returned into committee, that's been deferred for site visit for further information, all to consider detailed reasons for refusal, no further public questions or statements may be submitted. I'll move straight on then to item six, which is 23 stroke 00532 stroke F U L, land south of Southlands cottages, Runwell Road, Runwell, Wicksworth, Essex. Can we have the officer's report, please? You have to bear with us a minute, we're on the wrong application. Right, I think we're in the right place now, thank you.
Thank you Chair. This application is for the installation of a solar farm in Runwell. Members will be aware that this is a complex planning case with many considerations and balances to weigh up. Officers will be relying largely on the report which has been prepared for this committee. Members will be aware that the applicant has sent in additional information which have been put on the green sheet. This comprised comments on the officer's report, including legislation, appliance, comments from Basildon Council and materiality of weight attached to biodiversity net gain. Officers do not dispute these additional points raised by the applicant and members should read these in conjunction with the officer's report. The application site sits wholly within the metropolitan greenbelt and within open countryside. Despite this, settlements varying in scale and density are situated nearby to the site, including Battlesbridge to the east, Runwell to the west, the St Luke's major housing development to the north and Wickford Town to the south. The site and surrounding area consist of open fields interspersed with marginal vegetation with a sloping topography down to the River Crouch to the south. The field network within the site is characterised by irregularly shaped fields with well-established hedgerows and significant tree presence within and surrounding the site. The site boundaries in the most part contain mature trees and hedgerows. Tree and hedgerow planting can also be found within the site defining field boundaries. The landscape is predominantly composed of rural character elements and is open and natural, with some localised manmade influences and features. These include the overhead transmission lines and pylons that cross the site, the A130 and associated interchange with the A132, the railway line to the south-east of the site, agricultural buildings with access tracks and residential dwellings. Importantly, despite the existing vegetation bounding the site, areas of the land are clearly visible from local visual receptors. Due to the landform and topography, exposed uninterrupted views of the site are easily achieved from sections of the A130, the A132, Reston Turnpike and properties along Runwell Road. This heightens the prominence of the site within the wider rural arable landscape and the impact of the proposals is greater due to the site's elevated position. A public right of way intersects the site in an east-west orientation which provides a link between Runwell Road and the village of Battlesbridge. To the south, another footpath runs parallel to the River Crouch within Basildon District. Included with the proposals is a programme of landscape enhancement and mitigation, which the applicant has proposed to screen, soften and offset the development impacts. The proposal includes 1.8 kilometres of additional hedgerow, woodland buffer strips totaling half a hectare, biodiversity net gain totaling 135% in habitat and 85% in hedgerow units respectively, wildflower meadows and a wildflower corridor along the extent of the public right of way. The MPPF and local planning policies set out that solar farms do not fall within any of the exceptions for development in the greenbelt and therefore is inappropriate development. This is a matter which is not disputed between the applicant and the council. In reference to national and local policy, any harm to the greenbelt is afforded substantial weight. In addition to the principle of development in the greenbelt, impacts to landscape character and visual amenity are another key consideration. The committee will need to consider whether the very special circumstances presented with the application outweigh the identified harms. The development would be located across a series of agricultural fields with a gently sloping gradient. The fields within the site are delineated and divided by existing hedgerows and trees. The site itself is open, but the wider area contains a varied pattern of undulating landform creating areas of low-lying land and elevated bridges. In terms of spatial impact, the extent of the solar arrays and associated infrastructure are new features which are not present within the existing landscape. Due to their mass, scale and geographical area, the resulting change of use and urbanisation of the land arising from the proposal would result in a significant change of spatial character that would result in a loss of openness to the greenbelt. In terms of visual impacts, for key visual receptors from the public right of way, as well as occupants of residential properties in locality and users of the local highway network, there will be a significant adverse impact to landscape character and visual amenity, which the proposed landscaping and mitigation would not completely mitigate. The proposal would therefore lead to a significant loss of visual openness to the greenbelt, as well as significant adverse impacts to landscape character and visual amenity. It is accepted by both the applicant and the council that the proposal is inappropriate development. The matters on this slide have been presented as very special circumstances which the applicant contends are sufficient to outweigh the harms identified. Officers conclude that the proposal would result in visual and spatial loss of openness and would adversely affect landscape character and visual amenity. Despite significant weight being attached to renewable energy generation and biodiversity net gain, the identified harm is significant in impact and carries substantial weight. Officers conclude that the very special circumstances advanced do not clearly outweigh the harms to the greenbelt and on planning balance would still amount to significant adverse impact to landscape character and visual amenity. To conclude, the proposal is inappropriate development and will lead to significant spatial and visual harms to the greenbelt. Despite the proposed screening mitigation, the impact of visual and spatial harm would result in a significant adverse impact to landscape character and visual amenity. This must be afforded substantial weight in the planning assessment. Officers have assessed that the very special circumstances do not outweigh these harms, however this is something that members will need to weigh in the planning balance.
Thank you. Just to check, has everyone seen the green sheet? Yep, okay, that's good. On we go then. The first person to speak, Richard Moore. Refuse the microphone, please, you have two minutes. That's better.
Super. Thank you Chair and good evening councillors, I'm Richard, I'm one of the planners at Enzo Energy, a company seeking to increase the amount of renewable energy generated in the UK to tackle climate change and provide energy security. It is obvious that this country needs more renewable energy. We are facing an energy crisis driven by the international geopolitics of fossil fuels. The British Energy Security Strategy emphasises the need for more UK-based renewable energy, a power supply that is made in Britain for Britain, that is immune to the whims of the price-fixing oil cartel OPEC and not influenced by conflicts abroad. Your officers are recommending you refuse permission tonight based on harms to the greenbelt and to the landscape. These harms disappear when the solar farm is decommissioned. On the other hand, we have the benefits associated with renewable energy, the benefits of energy storage and flexibility, benefits to biodiversity, significant investment into Chelmsford and the diversification and economic support offered to a local farming business. The benefits alone outnumber and outweigh the temporary harms identified. All forms of development may have some local negative impacts, but that is no reason to discount or reduce the importance of the benefits it delivers. The planning inspectors allowing renewable projects at Sandown Brook near West Hanningfield, Craze Hall near Billerica and Parsonage Road near Stansted all concluded the significant benefits of renewables outweighed the temporary harms. This project will deliver 6,000 homes' worth of electricity every year on just 0.2% of the greenbelt within Chelmsford District, displace 5,000 tonnes of CO2 entering the atmosphere every year for 40 years and provide a substantial 135% biodiversity net gain for habitats, a gain far beyond any required by legislation or policy. Your councillors declared a climate emergency and the fact your officers are recommending you refuse this project sits very uncomfortably against this declaration, the Climate Change Action Plan and the local and national policies that support and encourage renewable energy development.
Can you please sum up, please?
As against that background, I sincerely request you approve the application, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Can we move on? Please be aware that anyone who sent in information, whether they are here or not, we will have seen their information. So the first person to actually want to speak is Michael Graham. Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Esteemed Chair and council members, my name is Michael Graham and I come before you not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who is deeply connected to this specific land. My home is adjacent to the proposed solar farm and consists of 13 acres which is solely used for the purposes of conserving rare breed native UK ponies. For decades, my family has upheld a legacy of conservation dedicating ourselves to the protection of endangered breeds like the Dales and Fell Ponies that find sanctuary in our fields, with Dales Ponies having moved to critical status within the Rare Breed Survival Trust, meaning there are fewer than 300 mares in existence. The proposal for a solar farm while promising sustainability casts a shadow over our efforts. The shimmering glare of panels could unsettle our beloved horses, creatures sensitive to sudden movements and sounds. Their safety and wellbeing and that of my wife and eight-year-old son intending, caring and exercising these ponies inextricably linked to this land are at stake. During the consultation period, our attempts to engage were met with silence, unlike that of other residents. Our concerns born from a deep understanding of this ecosystem were overlooked. This overlook is not just a dismissal of our adjacent property, it's a dismissal of our commitment to conserving these rare breeds woven into the fabric of this landscape. Moreover, the encroachment on the greenbelt goes beyond visual intrusion. It challenges the essence of preservation and contradicts the very purpose of protecting these sanctuaries. High fences and intrusive infrastructure disrupt the harmony of this belt, undermining its significance in conserving the natural heritage we hold dear. I implore you to see beyond blueprints and statistics, this is about safeguarding a passion cultivated over a lifetime, ensuring that these rare breeds with their historical significance remain an integral part of this landscape.
Please sum up now.
I'm in total support of the officer's recommendation to refuse this planning application and trust you the members will also support this recommendation.
Thank you. Then we have Kevin Brewster.
Good evening, Chair and members of the committee. I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen to the concerns of residents here tonight. My name is Kevin. My home is adjacent to this proposal and the installation and it will impact my family greatly. Currently, I look out of my kitchen window and I look onto what I would consider rolling farmland. This proposal will dramatically alter the landscape for all local residents. The proposal is highly visible from Wickford Memorial Park and Runwell and the surrounding areas. At 160 acres, the scale of this proposed development, which is predominantly made up of metal structures, faulted rotaries, at a distance these will merge into each other and will be not dissimilar visually to like a distribution centre in the landscape. My other concern is the perceived obstruction to the public right of way and associated safety risks. One of the main benefits of the greenbelt and why its protection in a specific location is important is it provides local residents with access to open space and the countryside for health and wellbeing. One of the main benefits, sorry, the public footpath is one of the only ways to safely cross the busy A130. This path runs right through the proposed development. Whilst the public footpath is retained in the plans, it outlines installation of two-metre-high fences either side of the path and installation of other security measures such as CCTV, TV and lighting. This creates an enclosed tunnel effect which runs for over 1,000 metres. This creates an intimidating environment of densely set rows of solar panels, electrical transformers and fences, which for many would feel like you're not supposed to be there, otherwise why would you need all that stuff in the first place if there was no risks? It also memos the option to avoid potential risks such as fire or if a person was confronted by an individual or larger group. I believe this would obstruct the use and accessibility of wider amenities for local residents beyond the proposed installation like easy access to Battlebridge, popular walking route for families specifically during the summer. I welcome the planning officer's report, it is wide-ranging and robust and I thank you for that. Members of the committee, I hope that you uphold that refusal tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Banks.
Hello everyone, I'm Sue Banks, thank you Chair for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have lived on Runwell Road for four years, we had the option to move to Berkshire or stay in Essex when we moved in together. We made the decision to stay here because of our vast green landscape and our neighbours. My home is uncomfortably close to this significant solar farm proposal. I work full-time and work for me is home-based and I'm often at my laptop or on calls for long periods of time. Most days I walk on the public footpath through the fields and it's a nice three-mile loop. I love walking and it supports my mental health and wellbeing. I head out on my own and I just listen to the sounds around me, enjoying the landscape, watching things change each and every day. I notice new things and that uplifts my mood and it makes me a better person for the rest of the day. The proposal suggests a huge security fence to the left and to the right of me for a third of my walk. I'll be honest, I'm a confident middle-aged woman, but this makes me feel intimidated for my safety. Sorry. Today I can see in the distance and I can spot anybody walking towards me. This gives me a conscious choice to walk towards them or allows me the opportunity to follow a different route if I don't feel safe. Being effectively caged in from Runwell to Battlesbridge isn't going to make me feel safe, isn't going to allow me to enjoy those views, there's going to be constant sounds of humming from the solar farm, but most importantly, I want to feel safe in the area in which I live. This means I'll have no choice but to walk a different route on busy roads or just stay home. If you're a male in the room tonight, all I ask is that if you were to consider that I was your wife, your sister, your daughter or a female friend, as a female, we have to consider safety when we walk out alone. I can't choose to walk in the day or night time like you can. I'm in total support of the officer's recommendation to refuse his application and I trust the committee's upholding this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Quiet, please. Councillor Clark.
Thank you Chair. Good evening members. This application was called to committee by myself as the ward member. It's for the installation of the solar farm and battery storage and associated infrastructure. The reason for this, during a period of many months since this was first raised as a potential site, events have changed from what looked like a difficult application given its location within the greenbelt. First, the applicant held a public consultation with local residents within the ward in April Following a meeting with neighbours adjacent to the site, the applicant resubmitted the application with a much reduced plan of 59 hectares from the original 70. The error withdrawn was adjacent to the residential properties. Secondly, the issue of the greenbelt was challenged by appeal, having been refused for very similar reasons as we have with this application. The planning inspector decided that very special circumstances did exist with solar farm applications within the greenbelt and despite the moderate damage to the greenbelt, upheld the appeal due to the need for renewable energy. I think it's fair to say here, I've heard this report and words like substantial and moderate are completely different and I'm using the words quoted from the appeal of similar applications. Although this is not a game changer, it's altered what could be a sound reason for refusal to one that allows. If this is refused, it will no doubt go to appeal at a greater cost and with very good chance of success. Thirdly, the lease of 40 years is still determined as temporary. When this expires, this will still be greenbelt. It has to be restored to the original state. It would not be previously developed land and it would not be a brownfield site. In the appeal decisions, the inspector quoted 'very significant weight' and quote 'substantial weight is given to biodiversity effects'. This site can boast an increase of 138% for habitat and 85 for hedgerow aspects compared to other applications upheld nearby which are much less. The legacy, should this be permitted, would be land that has been farmed for many, many years with all sorts of fertilisers to the point where it cannot be described as a good quality. A period of 40 years would allow this to be returned to a land much enriched by a period of grassland and wildflowers. The land, if this was permitted, would be farmed with sheep which can additionally reduce the need for cutting the grass. It's still agriculture, just a different part of the wide spectrum of farming. At the moment, there is a suggestion that there will be substantial harm to the area. For those unfamiliar with this site, I know we've seen pictures of it tonight, it lies adjacent to a major trunk road, the A130, which has six lanes of traffic using it every day and this is likely to increase substantially from the current 60,000 cars a day which use it when the Lower Thames crossing is open. Then there is the array of electricity pylons scattered all over the area and connected to the National Grid substation. This application and others proposed to be connected should be noted would be by underground cables, not by pylons. It should be noted the connection to the grid, sorry, I beg your pardon, there is also a large sewage treatment works just the other side of the River Crouch to this site and a mile due south of this, a proposed landfill site opposite the substation. There are also several large areas of industrial units, particularly at Doloman's Farm, a gain within close distance of this proposed site. The question has to be therefore, which bit of the greenbelt so far has been protected for all this development? When I first viewed this, I like many were apprehensive, but recent events in the UAE emphasised the fact that we are still so far behind on the targets to become carbon neutral and abandon the use of fossil fuels. As I looked further into a very complex subject, I am now convinced, if as a council we are serious about meeting these targets, it has to be by embracing developments such as this. Officers have had several months, or many months, to prepare this extensive report for which I am grateful. I had a couple of weeks to call it to committee for what I think is a compelling proof that this application needs to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've covered all the people that should speak in advance. Are there any points you wish to come back on at the moment? No? Okay, we'll open it to the committee, please. Who would like to speak first? Councillor Ashley.
I was just wondering, and I know that officers said that they didn't wish to come back on on what had just been said, but I was wondering regarding the comment about the rare breeds, is that a material consideration in this case in the opinion of the officers?
There was no identified harm to breeds.
Thank you. Who would like to? Yes, please carry on. Can't see everybody's name, please, tonight.
Thank you Madam Chair. This council announced the climate and ecological emergency on July 2019 and I think this application for solar panel installations provides a material service to achieve our own climate goals. It would be a regressive step if this administration were to vote against... It would be a regressive step if this administration were to vote against the given stated outcome of the power generation for 6,098 homes and the displacement of 5,130 tonnes of CO2 per annum. To me, there could not be any more very special circumstances. I do however have a question on the site selection. Do we know if any other sites not on the green belt were assessed before selection of this site? And what are the overarching reasons for this site selection?
Are you ready to come back?
Sorry Chair, I don't think that's a question for the officers that we can answer. We don't select sites for this, we deal with the applications that are submitted to us.
Okay. councillor Larch.
Thank you Chair. So my main question really is about how this application is different to the applications that were in the green belt and then have been approved appeal.
So as we're aware, you know, we consider sites on a site by site basis with this scheme. We followed the recommendation of our landscape consultants, Play Services who are here tonight. So yeah, we followed their recommendation. I was wondering whether it might be a good opportunity for Play Services to come in just to explain their role with the application.
Yes, I'll be fine. Please do.
Hi, good evening everyone. My name's Pete Dawson, I'm the built project manager at Play Services. We provide specialist services, landscape advice to Chelmsford City Council. We provide advice on the over solar farm applications you've had. We responded to the application on the 5th, the 7th this year. We focused on the landscape visual impact assessment of the application, so all of the other issues that the officers raised haven't been considered, we're focusing purely on their landscape consultants' report on the site. I'll take you through the approach we normally go through and then I'll summarise with how we ended up with our recommendations and our advice to the case officer and you at Chelmsford City Council. So we start by determining the significance of the site and it's assessed in a two-stage approach. Firstly, we consider the effect of sensitivity on the receptor points and we make judgements. So receptor points are how you view the site from road, public right of way or residential houses. That's made up of the susceptibility to the receptor to the type of change arising from the specific proposal. So obviously it's quite significant in this regard and the value attached to the receptor point. So somebody walking through the site on a public right of way will have a significant impact than somebody on the A130 driving past. Secondly, the magnitude is reviewed considering the size and scale and effects of the development, the geographical extent of the site and the area, in this case a very large one, and the duration of the effect and its reversibility. So you know, this is a 40 year application. Putting all that together, we consider this criteria is fed into an assessment of the significance of the impact on the visual impact of the site. Step two is combining the judgements based on the visual and the overall judgements in terms of how susceptible to change the site and how significant that will be. The rationale for the overall judgement must be clear, so the applicants have to make it clear to us demonstrating that how susceptibility to change and the value together contribute to the sensitivity of the receptor, so how people view the site and view the change and how judgements about scale, extent, duration contribute to the magnitude of the effects. And finally, how the resulting judgements about sensitivity and magnitude are combined to inform judgements about overall significant of the effects. So if you're still with me, I'll lead you to how that came to our conclusions. So in our professional opinion, when reviewing the landscape consultants, LVIA, landscape visual impact assessment that was attached to the application, we felt that the assessment does not appropriately address the individual factors in accordance with Glevia Free and TGN O2/21, which are the Landscape Institute's guidance notes on this. And thus it's not clear how the assessment has provided a judgement regarding the overall landscape value. The guidance emphasises that the assessment of value attached to the landscape should be carried out with a clearly recorded and transparent framework, so the decision making is clear and we felt that the applicant landscape architects hadn't demonstrated that in their application. Therefore, we're of the judgement that the proposed scheme will have a substantial adverse impact on both landscape character and visual immunity. I recommend it in our response dated the 5th, the 7th this year. There's more detailed assessment and concise review of the baseline study and assessment of the effects should be provided. This detailed assessment was not forthcoming and the application remains as it was. I hope that answered the question.
Thank you. councillor Thompson.
Thank you. I thought the ward councillor spoke very convincingly about a lot of the issues, including agricultural development, the road and also really importantly, the reversibility of this application. The rate that technology is moving, there is I think quite a high chance that more efficient technologies will be available in 40 years for us to continue to generate clean energy, whether it's solar or in other ways. And all the while, that land can still be reverted to the green belt. So I would find it extremely difficult to refuse this application. And I also just think there's a wider point that while I totally understand where the residents are coming from, it is a substantial change. I think quite soon we'll wonder what we're protecting if we don't take fast action on this sort of thing, both in terms of farming value and in terms of the natural environment.
Thank you. I would like to ask a question about the public right of way and this feeling that the residents have about it being enclosed on each side, how much weight do you give to that? And are there any conditions that you could add to the application?
Thank you. So this slide shows the sections from along the public right of way system. So there would be a buffer, a 20 metre buffer between the solar panels and the right of way. There would be planting along, so the point is that there would be, obviously at the moment, there's open views across the rural area, the open countryside and that would dramatically change as part of the proposals.
So do the trees actually help from the side of the fence? Will they be outside the fence? Are you with me?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sorry, the plan on the screen shows that the trees would be inside the fence.
It's not very easy to see on there. I was hoping some local views would be available.
Madam Chair.
Sorry. To see whether the landscaping will actually stop the feeling of enclosure because of the fences that will be either side of the actual public right of way. How much of a difference will that create?
Yeah, this slide shows the fencing. As I said before, the landscape screening would be inside of the proposed fence. I was wondering whether Peter could come in again just to speak about the impacts of the public right of way, whether the screening's acceptable to mitigate the harms?
I think one of the significant viewpoints was through the public right of way. So viewpoint one and two, which had the most significant change, obviously because you're close up to the solar panel arrays and the fence, I think the question was around security and how that could be if you were using that, if you're walking through that space, how would you feel safe if you felt like, you know, there's no way out, you're walking straight back or forth. So again, really difficult to that, it's a security issue for the site to keep people out and landscape screening over 40 years would obviously help mask the solar farm and the array, but in terms of security, it's just a single route, so there's no option to change that.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to come in? councillor Dobson.
Thank you Chair. I've just got a few minor questions. First of all, please, just to initiate, just one on the public right of way. What is the actual width of the public right of way? I know there's probably a scale drawing on there, that was just one thing I was going to just thought of when I just saw that picture. Secondly, I know you showed a slide with the proposed planting. I have to admit, I found that quite difficult to work out and I just wondered what mitigation as far as the planting etc was actually, has actually been proposed to try and shield some of the views? And lastly, the council's SPD on paragraph 7.37 talks about the potential benefits to the local community and I wanted to ask whether this particular application, have the applicants actually offered any benefits to the local community? Paragraph 7.37, it's important that local communities can realise the benefits associated with the project throughout its lifetime. You know, opportunities for community benefit and a positive community legacy for the development should be explored or those will not be relevant to the termination of the planning application. I just wondered if there was anything proposed by the applicant that would, shall we say, soften the application for the local community? Thank you Chair.
On that final point, we're not aware of any, any community benefits of the scheme that have been offered by the applicant.
Right, okay. Thank you. Yes, please. Sorry, was this, I think there's something else first.
These, the photographs on the screen should show the width of the public right of way, especially the top photos.
So is that what it would be once the fencing is up? Sorry Chair.
That's not a very easy drawing to look at, I'm afraid.
Do you want me to come in here because I've got the consultation from the Prowl team and they're actually happy. It would be that the drawings are showing there'd be a 20 metre gap between the two hedgerows or fencing then vegetation and they're entirely satisfied. A cross field Prowl is a standard width of a metre. I don't know the definitive width of this, but the standard one would be a metre. So here we're looking at a 20 metre gap between and they were satisfied with that. Okay.
Thank you. Who else?
Thank you Chair. I want to make a couple of, maybe a point and then a question. I think it's really important that as a planning committee, we base our decisions on planning policy and that we're not waylaid by other masses, albeit the climate emergency of course is very, very important and something that we are desperately trying to address. That said, the council officers, the professional officers that we seek advice from have spent an awfully long time weighing up the pros and cons of this application and I think rightly have come to the conclusion to refuse it because it is on metropolitan green belt. And it's quite clearly written in 6.17 of the report that the national planning policy framework, if you're going to damage the metropolitan green belt, it does not automatically override environmental protection. So this application is overriding local metropolitan green belt environmental protections. And from a policy point of view, I don't think we have much choice than to refuse it and go with the officer's recommendation. All that said, my plea of the officers, my question to the officers is, if we refuse this tonight and it goes to appeal, what are the chances of the inspector overturning our refusal?
I think that's a question maybe unlikely to answer, but is there anyone who wishes to make a guess?
I mean, we're obviously aware of the appeal precedents, that some of those are quite local to this site and, you know, they have been allowed. Each site as we know is considered on individual merits, so it is sometimes difficult to compare apples with apples, but we are dealing with a site here where we have concluded that the harm to the green belt and to landscape and visual receptors is substantial or significant. And it's on that basis that we've reached a conclusion, we have bearing in mind the very special circumstances. It is a very difficult balance, it is a very difficult balance and the benefits in terms of energy, you know, that the energy provision this scheme would provide is a substantial weighting factor for sure. So an inspector could reasonably find differently to officers. Of course they could because, you know, that's just the way it goes, but it's, yeah, it's obviously for members to decide whether that's, you know, how much weighting should be given to those very special circumstances tonight.
Thank you. councillor Thompson.
Thank you Chair. And through you, I'd just like to ask the officers, obviously you've acknowledged in your comments there that there was a balance and that there were points on both sides. Was it, was it a close balance, would you say?
Again, it's quite hard for the officers, I think, tonight.
It's, yeah, of course it's, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, our policies as we read them, in terms of the national policies, in terms of the local policies, they actually do point quite strongly to this being an unacceptable outcome because of the harms that are caused. I think the inspectors maybe take a slightly different view in terms of the weight that they might put on the energy side, the energy benefits that come from these proposals. We of course can only judge these applications based on our adopted policies, our adopted development plan, so that's obviously how we come to our conclusions.
councillor Papa.
Thank you Chair, officers and members. I do see that there's a lot of benefits that the applicant has put through, but clearly there's a policy or a law is made to follow and they consider all these elements and they make those policies. Based on the policy, I think this application should be rejected and I also believe that there might be other forms that could be, as Richard just asked, if there's any other form that's available, not by this applicant and I'm sure they should be able to fulfil these needs. So based on the policy versus the benefits, I'll stick to the policy and I think this application should be rejected. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor Larch, you had your hand up.
Thank you Chair. Yes, so I think that the balance between harm and the special circumstances is quite fine. The starting point though is that it's a green belt and it's, and that is to be protected and it is also very clear that just because something is a solar farm in the planning guidance, that doesn't necessarily automatically mean that it's okay to put it on green belt land. And we are, just to come back a little bit on what councillor Highland said, we are all here here as individuals, and we're not making our own personal judgements about things. We are here, as councillor Wilson says, to look at planning policy and the framework, and then make a decision based on how that should be implemented in this particular case. So on the application itself, I think that, as I say, it is a very fine balance between the green belt and then the provision of renewable energy. I of the view, I think that refusing the application is the right thing to do in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you Chair. I have to say, I admit that I'm really struggling with this particular application. As you know, the two solar farms that have been approved, well, actually three, but two major solar farms that have been approved, were both in my ward. I was quite involved in both of those applications, one of which was approved by this committee and the other was allowed on appeal. There are a lot of, to me, there are a lot of parallels with especially the West Hanning Field one, which is the one that was allowed on appeal. For example, as I was going through the inspector's reports, and it says about 40 years is a long time, it's not permanent, so therefore it's just moderate harm to the green belt. There are all sorts of comments that the inspector has come, that are appropriate really, to this particular one. So I really do think it is very much a very fine balance. And I appreciate the work that the officers have done on this, and obviously for place services as well. It is a difficult one. So, yeah. So, yeah, thank you Chair. That's really all I need to say. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thanks Chair. I'm finding this difficult as well, because of the dilemma of renewable energy, which we must have, and the needs of the local residents as well. I'm trying to understand what difference in capacity that this site would make overall. There must be an overall calculation of energy requirements going forward. And will this make a big dent in that, you know, or is it quite small relatively?
Yes, please.
I'm certainly not going to try and quote any facts or figures here. But the, I mean, I think everyone's aware that the magnitude of our energy needs going forward, as we try to move away from fossil fuels, dependency is huge. And the, each of these individual sites is really a drop in the ocean, really. But they, you know, they do cumulatively add up. So I'm not quite sure I can directly answer your question, but, I mean, that's the best I can do, really.
Yeah, no, I think that's the thing. I was trying to measure whether this was piecemeal with the effect on the environment, or there is a better location where, you know, the capacity could be better served. That was what I was trying to sort of understand.
I think it's a difficult one for the officers and for us.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Thank you. Please.
I'll start with saying that I did notice that the fields do show signs of degradation. So some form of regenerative farming, alternative use, does hold to merit. And I was pleased to see them grazing, doing it with their undergrazed option. That is a much better way of doing a solar farm. I'm not sure, on the whole, whether on balance, that outweighs. And I have seen other things that other solar farms have done to help mitigate their effect, particularly on the views, particularly on access and landscape. There's other ways to form security at solar farms without blocking everything off and actually create a multi-use regenerative space for both public and delivering energy need. And some solar farms have done really good work, engaging with community. And it's on the mitigation side that I've got a question. Round the compound area where the big battery container units are, it's not quite clear, and the officers may have some more details, on what screening, particularly hedging potentially, or other forms of screening has been done around that, and what the view of the harm is of that compound that's very close to the road with the other houses on the landscape.
May I borrow just a minute?
Yeah, so I think this obviously is quite small. But on the top right of the screen, you'll see the compound itself. So we do have some existing field vegetation to the south of it and to the north. But immediately surrounding it, I wouldn't say there's that much screening, proposed screening. To the north, that's probably the densest area of screening, along that A132 boundary. So I would say that part of the site is actually quite well screened.
Okay. Okay. Councillor Papper?
Just one last point I want to make. So green belts are green belts, end of the day, right? So they've been defined as green belts to save those areas. And if we start outweighing the risk versus benefits, and then start, you know, going and building something because there's more benefits, that's what we identify, I think there'll be no green belts left over a period of time. So instead, I would say, we'll keep the green belts as it is, and we'll find a replacement for it. I think, just want to make that point. I mean, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you. I quite agree with the comments just made by councillor Papper, because there are circumstances under which it is legal to build on green belt sites. It is situation specific. I, we've heard a lot, and understandably, about the officer's judgement tonight. And whilst we should not, we should never throw the officer's judgement back at them, they're vastly more experienced and they're vastly more knowledgeable. At the same time, I've heard a lot of comments from the members about, we're here to enact policy. Well, we are, but we're also here to interpret policy and to vote according to our own judgement in light of those policies. We, all planning applications could be decided by the officers if that were the case, and there would be no need for us. So I do accept what, I do understand fully what the officers say. But for me, the sufficient special circumstances that I'm going to vote in favour of the application being granted. But that's not to say it's not a fine balancing act. But that's the conclusion I've come to.
Okay. Councillor Highland?
Thank you Chair. Just reviewing the climate emergency motion that was passed in July 2019, planning decisions are in line with a shift to net zero carbon by 2030. That's a policy, right? I mean, that is what we are intended to do as a council. So me, I would like to ensure that that's what we're trying to do, ensure that we shift to a net zero carbon by 2030. And this is one step along that road. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Appreciating we do determine every single application on its own merits, I would still like to go back to the other application that was overturned on appeal, the 00394. How similar were officers' reasons for refusal to that? And can you confirm what the main reasons were from the inspector to overturn the decision? Because I believe they, their belief that there was less harm to the landscape, and they gave additional weights to the special circumstances of the green energy production. Thank you.
We haven't got the, all of the facts in front of us, unfortunately. I mean, it's weighting, it's a consideration of weighting that you apply, that the inspectors apply. They're obviously looking at the same set of policies and the same set of conditions, but they are reaching a different conclusion. And they reason those conclusions. I think they've looked at the, the level of impact, the significance of impact that those proposals had. They're very similar, a lot of those proposals are very similar, obviously, to the ones that we're looking at. They cover a fairly large area of land. I believe some of those have been green belt, some of those have been countryside beyond the green belt. We've got, you know, a split along the old A130, and these sites fall either side of those. I can't point to any specific, here and now, can't point to any specific differences of approach, in terms of the impacts that were considered, or the reasons for those outcomes being different to what officers have concluded.
Okay. I have a question. I may have missed it, but these solar arrays will actually be following the sun. Now, was that true of the other two applications? I don't think it was. Can you remember? Or find out?
I can speak on the one that was allowed. They were fixed, whereas this is trapped.
They were fixed, yes. That still bothers me. So, anyone else? No? Okay. Well, if no one else wishes to speak, I think I'll...
Madam Chair, can I just, sorry, I was trying to speak about the public rights of way.
I know, but you had...
Well, you didn't ask me.
I didn't, no. Because we'd already opened it. Um, do you want me to? I don't think we have anything extra. I think we've got enough information, thank you, including about the public rights of way. So I will ask for, uh?
Madam Chair, may I ask for a named vote?
Sorry?
May I ask for a named vote?
Yes, you're quite at liberty to do that, but everybody will be seen anyway as voting or not, as it happens. So we will...
You need more people than just one to request it. I can double check. I think it's three we'd need to request a recorded vote.
Sorry, three individuals. Yeah, I asked for it.
You're quite happy to take that.
I asked for it.
Can I just double check the number we need? How many have we got requesting?
Sorry, can you put your mic on and speak? Dan? Because I didn't hear that.
I'm just going to double check the number we need for a recorded vote. One second.
Right, okay. Yes, I'd forgotten about that.
Yeah, it needs to be requested by three or more.
Can we ask who else wants a named vote?
I'm second.
You need three of you. It's only two of you. No, in that case, I'm afraid not. But I mean, we're all here as councillors, and it can be clearly seen that we're voting. Right. I'm still going to suggest that the land at Southlands Cottages be refused, as per the officer's report, for the reasons on page 28 to 30. Do I have a second?
I do. Yes, okay. In that case, all those in favour of going with the officer's report, please show. I'm joining them. Okay, all those against?
Ah, we have an impasse. I still have a casting vote. In which case, I will go with the officer's report, being that this application has been refused. Thank you. Right, thanks everyone. We have two more applications to look at, so. Right, moving on. The next item is item 72301193/REM, Wan Brassy Wood, Chelmsford Garden Community, Chelmsford. Can we have the officer's report, please?
Yep, thank you Chair. This item relates to a reserve matters application at number one Brassy Wood, which is for a nursery, along with associated access, car parking and landscaping. Members will note on the green sheet that we've recently received some comments from the channels management company. The matters relating to parking are dealt with in detail in the report, and will also be picked up again later in this presentation. Sorry, I've gone too far. Can we go back? Thank you. The application site, which is outlined in red, is a parcel of land that sits at the eastern end of an area of open space within phase two of the channel's residential led development. To the north of the site sits a three-storey apartment block, and to the south and east sit two and a half storey residential dwellings. The main issues for consideration in the determination of this application are as follows. The principle of development, access and parking, the impact of the proposal on the character of the area, with particular regard to the scale, appearance and landscaping of development, and the impact of development on neighbouring properties, with particular regard to any noise impacts, both during and after, during construction of a day nursery and following its operation. Turning first to the principle of development. The outline application for the wider channels development required the provision of an early years and childcare facility within the development. Sorry to interrupt. Chair, I live in channels. Does it become an interest? I live in the same channels development. Is it, does it become an interest? It's me, I'm asking a question. So I live in, I live in channels development. So does this become an interest? Or?
Are you...
I'm not part of the application.
Are you the Ward councillor?
No.
Are you close to the development?
I live in channels, Albert Ross Way, literally like two, three minutes away from there.
If you feel there is...
Okay, I'll walk away. Thanks.
In which case, please, if you leave.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine. Yes. Sorry about that, but that's the way it goes. Please carry on.
Oh, sorry Chair. I'll carry on. So, the principle of development. The outline application for the channels development required the provision of an early years and childcare facility, and this form an obligation within the section 106 agreement. The reserve matters application for the phase two of the channels, which is to the north of the application site, safeguarded the application site for an early years and childcare nursery provision. The site was considered the most appropriate location due to its central position within the The site was considered the most appropriate location due to its central position within the wider Channels development and due to its close proximity to the active travel links and bus stops. The plan on the slide shows where the building will sit on the site. The nursery would serve 76 children aged between nought and four with six separate rooms over two floors, one for each age group, and would employ 21 staff. The principle of constructing a nursery in this location has therefore been firmly established by both the legal agreement forming part of the outline planning permission for the Channels development and the reserve matters approval for the Channels phase two. Turning now to access and parking. This slide shows the footpath and cycle routes which connect Beaulieu and Channels and extend around the boundaries of the site. The site is indicated by the red asterisks. The dark blue lines show the primary active travel routes and the green lines show the secondary active travel routes. The plan clearly demonstrates the ease with which residents or staff who live in the wider Channels development or within Beaulieu, which is to the south, particularly those living within parcels K, L, M and N, which hopefully you can see on the slide, which are directly to the south, can walk or cycle to the site. The active travel routes would in most cases be quicker and more direct than driving to the nursery and would consequently reduce the number of vehicles visiting the site during peak times. Cycling provision has been provided at the nursery with 14 cycle spaces made available for staff and children. The spaces for children and visitors were provided in the form of eight Sheffield cycle stands which are located under the entrance canopy and the six spaces for staff would be located in a secure store which is integrated within the building. The level of cycle provision would also encourage parents and staff to use cycles to travel to and from the nursery. The phase two reserve matters saw approval for amongst other things, access and layout. Full details of the number and location of the visitor spaces were provided. Twelve visitor spaces were proposed comprising of seven lay-by spaces which were situated alongside the southern and eastern sides of the apartment block to the north. These are indicated by the blue stars on the slide. Further five spaces were located in an area to the west of the site, which is indicated by the yellow triangle. The twelve spaces were all originally shown within the approved adopted highway plan, which is what this plan is and what the purple shading indicates. Since the reserve matters approval and during the consideration of this application, officers have become aware that the five spaces to the west of the site have been removed from the adopted highway area and are now under the control and ownership of the Channels Management Company. Officers consider that the provision of the visitor parking was firmly established by the reserve matters and the level of provision is considered appropriate to meet the needs of all visitors. However, having regard to the concerns raised by residents and the Chelmsford Garden Community Council, officers have sought to negotiate a positive way forward and this has been with the county council, with the parking partnership and with the management company. And this seeks to ensure that the visitor spaces are genuinely available for all potential visitors. We propose to introduce a traffic regulation order to manage and control the use of the twelve visitor parking spaces. The applicant would be required to make an application for a traffic regulation order, which you'll see in condition five, which would induce limited waiting periods of 15 minutes for parents when dropping off and picking up their children. Outside of these restricted periods, the spaces would be available as present. Members will note from the green sheet that the management company have now agreed to include their five spaces within any TRO while still retaining ownership. This proposal is acceptable to officers. The restrictions that the applicant apply for will therefore cover all twelve spaces. The South Essex Parking Partnership have confirmed that they would be happy and able to enforce any TRO imposed on all of the spaces. Given that visitor parking provision was firmly established in the outline and reserve matters application, there was no requirement for the nursery to provide additional visitor parking. Notwithstanding this, the applicant has proposed three parallel parking spaces, which are indicated with the red stars on this plan. These spaces would create additional drop-off parking provision. The decision to include these spaces within the scheme is a positive and welcome inclusion and would increase the overall visitor parking provision available. The additional three spaces and the imposition of the TRO would ensure that there would be spaces available during drop-off and pick-up times and would be genuinely available to visitors at all other times. The application proposal does include an area of secure staff parking to the rear of the nursery building. The parking area was secured by a sliding gate and would contain 10 parking spaces. The staff parking provision is considered appropriate to serve the needs of the 21 staff, many of whom will car-share or travel to the site by other suitable means, other sustainable means, sorry. Turning now to the layout and scale of the proposed nursery building. The building would sit on the eastern side of the plot with the secure garden and parking to the rear. You can see from the plan that the five ground floor rooms would lead directly on a secure garden area with the back-of-house elements such as the offices fronting onto Brassy Wood. Soft landscaping would be provided to separate the building from the main road. The first floor room, which would be serving the oldest age group, would have a direct access onto a secure roof terrace, which sits in the centre of the roof. The building itself, which is shown on this plan, would be two stories in form and would comprise three distinct elements. The two outer sections would have monopitched green roofs, while the central section would have a flat roof with solar panels on the roof. The height of the building would increase from the southern end to the north from approximately 3.7 metres in the south to a height of 6.7 metres in the central part of the northernmost section. The tallest section of the building would sit closest to the large three-storey apartment building directly to the north. And whilst the monopitch roofs are not common within the street scene, it's considered by officers that they would add an element of interest in the appearance of the building and in the surrounding development. Differing materials are also proposed on each of the three sections. The material palette would reinforce, sorry, would reference the materials within the surrounding phase two development and would also help to differentiate and break down each of the three sections. Overall, the scale and appearance of the building is considered acceptable. This is an illustrative drawing which just explains a bit further what I've just said and shows how the building would sit within the plot and wider street scene. The apartment block is shown on the left-hand side and the existing residential dwellings, you can see them as well on that slide. It's clear from this image that the nursery would sit below the height of the neighbouring dwellings, which are directly opposite it. The illustration also shows the extent of landscaping that is proposed as part of this development, including the green roofs. The landscaping would include provision of a 1.5 metre high fence to the perimeter of the play space with hedge planting to soften and screen the fence. The soft landscaping would greatly assist in creating a pleasant environment and ensure the nursery interacts successfully into the street scene. Turning finally to neighbour relationship. Concerns have been raised by neighbouring residents and Chelmsford Garden Community Council relating to the noise associated with the operation and construction of the day nursery. Day nurseries are commonly found within residential areas. However, it's accepted that there is a potential for some noise impact. A noise management plan has been submitted by the applicant, which responds to the concerns of the residents. The report has been assessed by the council's Public Health team and considered acceptable. Condition three requires compliance with the plan to further help reduce noise and condition two restricts the hours of operation of the nursery to the hours of 7am to 6pm. The construction of the day nursery would, as all construction does, lead to some disruption during the build phase. Conditions on the outline application requiring the submission of a construction method statement and construction management plan will help to minimise disruption to residents during construction. Overall, it is considered there would be minimal noise impacts on residents and that the nursery would have an appropriate relationship with neighbouring properties. In conclusion, the principle of development is considered acceptable. The provision of a day nursery forms an obligation within the section 106 agreement and was also determined by the Channels phase two reserve matters. There'll be appropriate parking for visitors and staff and the scale and design of the nursery is acceptable and integrates successfully within the street scene. It's also considered that an appropriate relationship with neighbouring properties would be achieved. So therefore, officers recommend approval. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We have Victoria Player. Do you wish to speak?
Is that okay? Evening, I'm Victoria Player, speaking on behalf of Seymour House. I appreciate the opportunity to address the committee and provide insight into the development and operation of our proposed nursery school. Seymour House was founded in Chelmsford 34 years ago. We operate 10 nurseries in Essex and we're proud to say all of which are judged as outstanding by Ofsted. The proposal is for a high-quality building. The architectural style reflects and complements the local surroundings. As an early years provider, safeguarding children is our top priority and it's been at the forefront of all of our design decisions. The site is designated for early years use and construction is planned from September 2024. We expect construction to take approximately 12 months and will be tightly controlled with an award-winning contractor. The nursery will serve the community, offering full and part-time childcare places. The nursery class is the minimum size that meets the funding requirements and the younger end will meet the new funding coming in from April. We employ highly qualified early years educators and we've recently become an employer provider of apprenticeships and the building includes a training room to help support this. We have submitted a noise management plan that demonstrates there are no adverse noise impacts and we have lots of experience operating nurseries in residential areas harmoniously. Staggered drop-offs and pickups mean there is no concentration of arrivals and departures. Parking numbers are sufficient for our use with the traffic regulation order limiting the wait times in visitor bays already constructed as part of the wider master plan. In summary, we are committed to providing a high-quality building that will be an asset to the local community, providing outstanding care and education, supporting parents and providing training and employment opportunities in the area. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. councillor Andrew Wright, Chelmsford, is he? Oh, no, Chelmsford, he's not here. Right, do we have his information? I don't remember seeing anything.
That was someone we were expecting to attend, but they haven't.
Right, okay, in that case, we haven't anyone else. Is there anything you want to say before we go back?
No, there's nothing to add, thanks.
Okay, straight to the committee then, please. Who would like to speak? councillor Dobson.
Thank you Chair. Looking at the scheme, it looks a very interesting and well-designed scheme on a parcel of land that's already designated for early years use. However, I have, obviously, the main consideration, I think, is parking. There's obviously been a lot of discussion about that. And I just wanted to ask whether there was a, whether a parking survey had been carried out for the surrounding streets at the drop-off times. That just would, just check to see what space there is available around the area. And secondly, one of the comments from, I think, from the residents' representations queried about the views of the external play area from the apartment block and I wondered if that was an issue. Thank you Chair.
In terms of the parking issue, there has been a transport assessment submitted. That was originally before there was amendments to the scheme. But in terms of the parking, those matters, as we set out in the report and as I reiterated in the presentation, the spaces have been considered as part of the previous reserve matters. So we're satisfied that there is, that the space is there and the TRO will obviously help to further enhance that during pickup and drop-off times in the morning and in the afternoon. In terms of the overlooking issue that you mentioned, we're satisfied that there isn't going to be any harmful impacts in terms of overlooking into the roof terrace area or into the play area to the rear.
Sorry Chair, can I just briefly, going back to the parking survey, what I was thinking is the surround, not necessarily the actual five parking spaces and the various other dedicated parking spaces, but it's the actual parking space around in the local roads. If there are, you know, if there was a parking survey done for the environs of the actual application rather than specific that site. Thank you.
Okay, I can take that question Chair. As my colleague has set out, obviously, the parking issue was addressed at the outline stage and then subsequently, sorry, at the reserve matter stage for phase two, when the number of visitor spaces was determined to be acceptable, that was taking into account the nursery being proposed, the retail unit that's now an office and just general availability of spaces for residents within, visitors within the locality. There's not a survey being submitted, but all I would say is that the residential properties that are provided for within the Channels phase two development all have parking provision that is generous in terms of the level of provision. It meets the Beaulieu and Channels parking standards, which is more generous than, for example, historic Beaulieu Park, Chancellor Park, other areas. And also the parking spaces, both in terms of the garages and the driveway spaces are all sized to take larger vehicles. So historically, where you might have seen on developments such as Beaulieu Park, people are unable to use the garages or carports because their cars are simply too big now because obviously the spaces were determined at a time before people had much larger vehicles. The spaces on the Channels and Beaulieu development are much larger in terms of the garages and driveway spaces. So whilst we can't obviously, you know, determine if people choose to park on the road, that's up to them. But the fact is, they have more than ample parking on plot and those spaces are sized to accommodate larger vehicles. So, you know, they may choose to park on the street, visitors may choose to park there, but they have ample parking on plot to meet their needs. So we don't feel that there's going to be a lot of displacement into adjacent streets. But, you know, that said, that's why we have looked for those positive measures in terms of the TRO, which has the, you know, we put the condition on the recommendation before you to look to then provide that added layer of enforcement and management of the parking spaces. So we feel the visitor provision is acceptable in any event. As William has outlined, the applicant has actually provided three more spaces. They didn't need to do that, so effectively would have 15 spaces and there is capacity within the street. Aligned to that, obviously, as we've already set out, pickup and drop-off and as you've heard from the applicant, it's not the same as a, you know, primary or junior infant school where, you know, the drop-off and pick-up is all at the same time. The drop-off and pick-up will be staggered, there'll be some parents who choose not to have their child cared for each day. They may just pay for a half-day. So the pattern is going to be quite different than you would find for, you know, conventional sort of infant primary schools. So we're satisfied that the level of provision is acceptable. We've not asked the applicant to provide a survey, but we're satisfied that what's provided for is sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes, please.
Thanks Chair. 5.6 mentions contamination of the area, although it is, looks to be being dealt with as a provision. Can you explain what that contamination is?
Yeah, so the outline planning permission for Channels has a condition on their dealing with contamination and that's because previously the Channels site has had an array of different uses. There were elements of it that were previously used for landfill. It's had a farming use at one point, it had a golf course use, so it's had an array of different uses. So every reserve matter has to comply with the condition on the outline planning permission. So that requires the applicant then to submit a contamination report. And, I mean, I personally helped with all the phases on the Channels development. So every plot has had various certificates submitted to it. So there's remediation measures that they have to put in place. So there's gas membranes that go in there to ensure there's no gas seepage into the properties. And then there are certificates that are submitted, photographic evidence that the membranes have gone in and that's done for every property across the Channels development. So that condition will apply to this development as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? In that case, I will take this to a vote. That item 71 Brassy Wood be confirmed as being acceptable for the conditions on page 12 to 14. Do you have a second, or? Thank you. All in favour? Yes? Yes, complete. Right, thank you very much, everyone. We now move on to item H. Thank you. So it's 23012821-FL-Hem Cottage, North Hill, Little Badde. Can we have the officer's report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this presentation relates to item eight for a replacement dwelling at Hen Cottage, North Hill, Little Badde. The application site is located outside the defined settlement of Little Badde, within the rural area. The site itself is particularly sensitive, located between two Grade Two listed buildings, denoted by stars on the slide. Cock Farm to the north-east and Pilgrims to the west. The site benefits from an existing access off North Hill. Hen Cottage itself is a substantial single-story property with a detached, uh, existing outbuilding located to the west of the main house, adjacent to the boundary with Cock Farm. As you will have seen, land levels are a key consideration with this application, with the gradient sloping upwards from North Hill westerly. This slide shows the immediate surroundings of the site, as well as the site access off North Hill. The immediate context of the site is typically large two-story properties set within large verdant plots. The area presents an attractive aesthetic with mature vegetation and green margins, creating a semi-rural character. This is the proposed replacement dwelling. The dwelling would be two-story in form and have a traditional design, but site levels would be split by a full story with the building form and scale relating to that split. The main section of the house would be set on the level of the existing bungalow. The main issues for deliberation are the principle of development in the rural area, heritage impacts, impacts on neighbouring amenity and access. The proposed replacement dwelling would be sighted in a similar position to the existing bungalow. The existing change in levels across the site would be utilised and added to, so the, so that natural ground level would be lowered. The overall design of the replacement dwelling is broken down into separate elements using varying heights and depths. This results in an articulated scheme where the visual bulk of the building would be reduced overall. In terms of visual impact, the proposed replacement dwelling would be, would have a greater impact than the existing bungalow. However, it would only be one-point-eight tall meters taller than the existing. Considering that the site is set back from North Hill and largely shielded by Cock Farm, as well as dense natural landscaping features to the north and northwest, views of the property would be glimpsed from the local highway network, and this impact would not be over-dominant or intrusive. Officers conclude that the scheme is well-designed and would not have an adverse impact on the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. The sites sit between, sits between two listed buildings, Cock Farm and Pilgrims. The site forms part of the setting to the listed buildings, and the rural context contributes to their significance. The council's principal heritage officer has assessed the proposals and concluded that there would be no harm to the setting of the listed buildings. Concern has been raised from the adjacent neighbours Cock Farm and Pilgrims regarding adverse amenity, amenity impacts. Importantly, the proposed dwelling is only one-point-eight meters taller than the existing bungalow. The proposed dwelling would be located twelve-point-six meters away from Cock Farm, which is further away than the existing outbuilding on the site boundary, and the element nearest to the boundary would be single-story. There will be no overlooking or overbearing impacts to the occupiers of Cock Farm. As mentioned previously, Pilgrims is located on a higher land level than the site, and due to the minor increase in height, the proposal would not be overbearing to Pilgrims. There would not be any first-floor windows facing this neighbour, and natural screening would be retained between the sites. Concern has also been raised regarding the acceptability of the access road to serve the dwelling. The local highway authority have been consulted on the application and have recommended that the proposal will not alter the existing access arrangements and that the new dwelling would retain sufficient off-free parking. A construction management plan has been conditioned to control any impacts of the highway during the construction phase of the development. To conclude, the proposal has been considered, as have local objections, and meets the policies set out in both the Chelmsford Local Plan and the Little Badde Neighbourhood Plan. Officers recommend that the application is approved.
Thank you. Now we have two people with which to speak. Nick Wilkinson.
Madam Chair, committee members, I'm Nick Wilkinson, the owner of Cock Farm, uh, one of six listed buildings in the immediate vicinity of the development. The site of what is now Hen Cottage was originally called the Hen. The Hen was a small, single-story building, contemporary with a half-dozen or so listed buildings that surround it. Had the Hen survived, it would in all likelihood have been listed as well, preserving this tiny part of Little Badde unchanged in two centuries. The Hen did not survive, that chance of preservation was lost. However, when the approving of the current dwelling was made many years ago, while allowing for a significant expansion in size, it was restricted to a single-story, thus retaining the unique harmony of this historic part of the village. My question to the committee is what really has changed? Hen Cottage is the only property built in this tiny section of the village in over two-hundred years. Why is consideration being given to the construction of a self-styled manor house over three floors in such a sensitive site? I ask the committee to respect the objections of the neighbouring property owners, resident for twenty, thirty, fifty and over sixty years, not to blatantly disregard the Little Badde Neighbourhood Plan, its request for conservation status to be made to this area with so much historic interest, and to honour the judgement of your predecessors, restricting the site of Hen Cottage to a single-story property. I have no objection to anyone wanting to improve their home, but I ask the committee to consider the wider implications. The development of such scale and overbearing nature, once built, destroys an historic scene that when lost can never be authentically recreated. Thank you.
Sorry, John Low. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm from Pilgrims, um, and I thank you for your time. I shall focus only on two points. The planning requirement that the build does not result in any other harm and considerations about the ancient unmade track you've seen in the picture, the only access to the site which already provides a local amenity used especially by visiting walkers. The planning officer's report suggests no evidence for our statement that our bed and breakfast barn and our guests choose us because the site is secluded and not overlooked. Already, though, the applicant has removed tree and bush screening. The proposed manor house will be very close to our historic listed barn and much taller than Hen Cottage. The planning officer has yet to contact us for sight of our evidence. He is therefore, I suggest, not in a position to say that there isn't any. Gravy Lane. This ancient hedge, narrow and designated right-of-way is a fundamental element of the area's history. Essex highways is protective of its status and insists that it must be unobstructed at all times. Condition thirteen of the proposed approval requires no, in, no unbound materials to be applied. Gravy Lane is a conduit of significant surface water. The subsoil is notorious for instability. Hen Cottage, our barn and Pilgrims have all been had heavy weight underpinning. It is inconceivable that a proposal can satisfy the consequential environmental and conservation considerations. It will result in permanent damage or change, degrading the amenity value for walkers and residents. We believe these points have not been properly considered with Essex highways. Please pause to consider these factors or call for a separate scrutiny. Please do not become the voice of a council that got it wrong because it rushed a decision about this sensitive and historic site. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scott, is it just you to speak now? Well, you really need to tell us. Um, could you tell me your name, please?
Yes. I'm Councillor Irvine, Chair of Little Badde Parish Council.
Thanks, we just needed to know that. Um, please speak.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So, the proposal will harm a particularly important part of the village of Little Badde. And I wish to draw to your attention what I consider to be misrepresentations or at least defects within the report submitted to you. The report states that, despite being located outside the defined settlement of Little Badde, the site is within an established residential area. Contextual development is low-density with a mixed vernacular but are generally large, two-story detached dwellings, close quotes. However, I can confirm to you that there is only one property within the immediate vicinity that is visually as large as the proposed property, and that particular property is over two-hundred yards away. On either side of the application site are old listed weather-boarded and thatched cottages, and there are no modern properties within visual range. Indeed, there are few properties nearby at all, which is why the area is outside of the defined stat, settlement. So the report's claim that the proposed property will reflect the existing character of the street scene is therefore totally inaccurate. This immediate area is characterized by smaller traditional-style properties, cottages, an old country pub and a small green, which is owned by the parish council, directly between the application site and the road nearby. This important area is known to be the centre of the, one of the earliest settlements of the village of Little Badde. So it is entirely wrong for a large replacement property to be built on this site. Hen Cottage is all way, is already as large or larger than those immediately surrounding it. The proposed property on higher ground than its immediate neighbour and the road would be dominant and entirely out of character. It has a gross height of nine-point-two-five metres, including chimneys above its lowest built point, and it is over twenty-five metres wide. The property does not, the property, the report, uh, does refer to the adopted neighbourhood plan but fails to even mention that the ancient unmade road known as Gravy Lane, which provides the only access to the application site, is listed as a non-designated heritage asset. Policy LBNB-10 within the neighbourhood plan states that proposals affecting such assets or their settings should be endorsed by appropriate analysis to enable a balanced judgement regarding the scale of any harm or loss. I can now identify no such analysis. In other words, committee, if you approve this application, you will be ignoring the newly adopted neighbourhood plan on the, on the first occasion that there has been cause to consider it. The neighbourhood plan, a strategic, a statutory document, also proposes that this specific part of the village be put forward as a conservation area. The report acknowledges that your council's heritage officer has found such a proposal would be acceptable. Yet your planning officer dismisses this as irrelevant because the proposal at the moment has not yet been formalised. The point here is not whether this spot has yet been declared a conservation area, but that all agree it should be. There is further consideration that was not available to your planning officer at the time of the report that was, it was written. And a substantial and complex application has been submitted in the last few days for a significant part of the area, including this important site, to be made an area of outstanding natural beauty. The application has now gone in. While it will take some time before the application will judge, be judged, it contains important material regarding the heritage of this area. In short, in other parts of the parish, the proposed house might not be contentious, but in this important location within, within the village, it damages the setting and heritage, and further investigation is needed as it clearly preaches adopted policy. I therefore ask you to reject this application, or if you are not prepared to do that, to allow the possibility that the report before you is deficient and that the application should be, very least, be subject to further separate scrutiny before you make your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Scott.
Right, turn your microphone off. Thank you, Chair and Committee. Right, I think you've heard quite a bit already, but I'll just add my two penneth. Hen Cottage, Little Badde Village is of course not wishing to bar any new housing applications, but, sorry, I'm just making sure everyone can hear me. The planning application which is requested is in, is a particularly significant village location. Everybody's been saying this and I'm just saying it now, which has a special character, with only traditional cottages visible in every direction, with absolutely nothing close to the scale of the proposed application. The existing Hen Cottage is in no way a small property. Therefore, to knock it down to build something much larger, both horizontally and vertically, is over-development of the plot. Whereas the existing property cannot be seen from either of the two nearby roads, the proposed property will dominate both eastwards and dominate northwards. Therefore, why go against, as my, as Councillor Irvine said, why go against the Little Badde Neighbourhood Plan in its request for conservation status and within a village observing and protecting much historical value? A point I would like to stress is Hen Cottage, as with its neighbour Pilgrims, has required underpinning, and the proposed new development will be in the same subsoil. We also know that natural water drainage is from Pilgrims towards Hen Cottage and that Gravy Lane, as it passes the present house Hen Cottage, is regularly running with water. So further to this, Essex highways have previously mentioned Gravy Lane must remain at all times unobstructed. I will say, it wasn't unobstructed today. When I went down it, it had a large van outside Hen Cottage and I couldn't get past. So I would therefore like to ask the planning officer if he is certain that the right people in highways have been properly consulted, given that highways has previously taken an acute interest in Gravy Lane, acknowledged its very special heritage interest, and has imposed conditions not reflected in the proposed appro, approval to avoid damage to it or infringement of the conditions needed for this preservation. If the planning officer is not sure, does this not need to be pursued before any final approval? Now, this is very interesting, Chair and Committee. We've only learned today that there may indeed have been a constraint placed upon the original grant of permission for the existing property, restricting its design to a single-story so that it was subservient to the heritage cottages on either side. And this would be yet more evidence that the current proposal is damaging to this important location, which is clearly not subservient. So what I would like to recommend here is for the planning committee, due to the particular historic significance and the information I have just mentioned, uh, that we could actually have defer for a site visit and a further meeting while we are looking at the microfiche of what I've just described, because there is more evidence to prove that, gentlemen, the planning officer clearly hasn't had sight of this yet. And if it isn't looked at, then we are incorrect in bringing this forward at this stage. I will just stress again, I really feel I must. Information just learned today that there have, has been a constraint placed upon the original grant of permission to the existing property, restricting its design to a single-story so that it was subservient to the heritage cottages on either side. More evidence. The reason I can't give you any more evidence is because it came in today and we have to send a form in to get the code for the microfiche. So there is more information to offer you. Therefore, I stress again that this.
Thank you.
Should be deferred. Thank you. I'm finished now.
Um, do you wish to come back before we open it to the committee?
Uh, yeah, Chair, I can come back on a few of those points. Um, so the point about, um, the, uh, the conservation area proposal and the proposal for an area of outstanding natural beauty. Um, we can only consider the proposals and the application based on the adopted position that exists today. We, we have no, um, knowledge in, in, you know, internal knowledge or certainty as to, to the outcome of those applications. We don't know how long those applications may take to, um, We don't know how long those applications may take to run their course and what the outcome would be. So we can only determine this application based on the development plan as it exists today and any material considerations and those material considerations would not extend to current applications for, for conservation areas and any other formal designations. The, just touching on the setting and heritage considerations, including any concerns around Gravy Lane itself, we don't actually have Gravy Lane designated as a heritage asset, it's not a scheduled monument, it's not a designated, whether that's DES or non-DES heritage asset, so statutory or non-statutory heritage asset, it's not listed as such. It's obviously part of the setting of the historic landscape though and that has been considered as part of the setting of the nearby properties by the council's conservation officer who's concluded that there is no overriding objection to the proposals. The, the lack of development, nearby development of a similar nature, the local area is made up of, relatively speaking, quite a, you know, a good selection of properties nearby along Hollybread Lane and North Hill. And so it is part of a, an urbanised context, although that is quite a sporadic, relatively speaking, it's still got a feeling of countryside to it. And the property type that's been proposed is a vernacular style of property, very traditional style of property with good level of articulation. So although it may be a large property, it's visually read by its components, those components are broken down visually so that the overall massing of the building is substantially less on the eye. Unless I've missed anything that you want me to particularly come back on, I think that was, that was it on my list.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it now to the committee. Councillor Thorpe-Aps.
Thank you Chair. There were some comments I noticed in the paper about the neighbourhood plan and in the objections stating that the neighbourhood plan hasn't been given sufficient weighting. I just wanted to check with officers that the neighbourhood plan had been considered, particularly the heritage aspects listed in there. So there's, there's mention of Gravy, sorry, Gravy Lane and how that's not a city council designated heritage asset, but it may well be mentioned in Little Badde's neighbourhood plan. So I just wanted to check that that had been given sufficient weighting. Thank you.
Do you want to take that now or shall I ask for a few more comments first? Right, who else wanted to speak? Yes.
Thanks Chair. Can I ask how old the existing Hen Cottage is?
Right, okay. Is there another question before we go back? Yes, Councillor Hannon.
Thank you Chair. The unmade track from North Hill to the east, my question is, has that track been used for previous developments already? Because they were saying that it's, it's not really accessible to development traffic when I think there's been a couple of developments in both properties in previous times using that access.
Right, okay. I think three is probably enough for you to tackle first.
So firstly, on the point about the Little Badde neighbourhood plan, the committee report at paragraph 6.15 does confirm that the consideration has been given to the heritage assets, designated heritage assets and its, and their setting. So that is, that has been considered, that has been given due weight in the planning balance assessment when looking at these proposals. What were the other points? Oh, the age, I actually don't know the age of the property, but the age of the property, it's, it's, it's not, the property itself is not of any heritage merit in itself and obviously would have been built at some point in time and access would have been taken from that track to build that property.
There was a third point?
I think I tried to cover that in that answer.
In future, two points before we go back to the officers. What you were asking, yeah? Okay, who else would like to speak? That's Councillor Armstrong.
I have a bit of confusion question on condition thirteen, that no unbound material should be used in the surface treatment vehicle access within six metres of the boundary. It seems illogical to specify unbound hard standing to then go on to what is effectively a dirt track. Typically, that condition's put in to prevent things like shingle or other driveway materials from being dragged out into the highway, but if the immediate highway is a dirt road, I'm not quite sure that that one would typically stand. I also have on the condition for the brickwork states materials, could it also be conditioned to sort of the colouration of the grout and type of brick which we're doing other conservation, I know this isn't a conservation area but similar conservation settings, so that we ensure that it's used with a brick that looks like a softer old made brick rather than a hard modern brick with a cement based grout? And the only other thing would be on the condition for possibly for commando or maybe the one on the bricks would be to detail that the tiles are traditional plain tiles rather than a modern iteration, considering the historic setting of the buildings either side.
Thank you, do you want to come back on that?
So on the first point, the six metre no unbound material, yes, in hindsight, looking at the, looking at that, yes, you know, you don't want to drag material, any material on to any adjacent pathway, so it's relevant, but I take the point that it's not a public highway and that usually is imposed on a, on a public highway. I don't see any harm in it being imposed here because it still would mean that you're not dragging any unbound material on to that, on to that track, so that's still, still a relevant consideration. The conditions cover samples of materials, so they would cover samples of brick and tile materials. We don't specify specifically what they should be at this stage, obviously it's reflecting what's shown on the drawings and we assess those on merit when they're submitted and we do have an additional condition which requires that the mortar jointing is flush or recessed but doesn't cover the colour of mortar.
Okay, Councillor Pepper.
Thank you Chair. The last site visit was quite useful. In this case, it's very hard to make decision, so I would kindly request a site visit because that actually, I need to talk about the last site visit because I, in that application, I was about to say no, but when I went in there after looking at it, I completely changed my mind and I went with the officer's recommendation to go for a yes. So I would kindly request a site visit for this one to make my decision.
Thank you. Do you have a second of that? I have a second in that case, all those in favour of a site visit? Please raise your hands. Gee, I'm afraid that is not enough. Thank you. Right, who else would like to speak? Councillor Tron.
Thank you. There's been comments about the number of stories and I'd like some clarity around the relevance of my understanding that the current dwelling was a single storey and yet the proposal is for it to be much taller and just understanding a bit more around how material that is in terms of the considerations that are made with the new design that's being proposed.
Yeah, so this slide shows the existing, which is obviously an existing bungalow and the proposed which is a two-storey split level sort of dwelling. So the, the two-storey dwelling would be 1.8 metres taller than the bungalow. Obviously, these drawings on the slide are not to scale, so please don't look at those. So obviously, we do take into account scale when we're, when we consider design and impact to views and impact to the rural area. In this case, we have a dwelling in our view which is, which is well designed, well articulated, broken up, so that additional scale is achieved well, you know, it's, it's, it's broken up in a way that breaks up its massing.
Yes, just as a follow-up question, are there any, you know, official guidelines around such things?
No, so in the rural area, there's no restrictive policies on, on, you know, scale of replacement dwellings. It's about the impact to the, the character, the intrinsic beauty and character of the countryside.
On the track itself, I appreciate there's a condition for, obviously, the construction management plan. Is there merit in holding or placing an additional condition to a management plan for the maintenance of the track, the protection of the track and the protection of the hedges adjacent either side of the track during the construction phase to ensure that, that that is properly considered rather than just a general construction management plan that includes health and safety and general access, but specifically to maintaining that track? Because should the lorries that might be required to build this use that track, then it might need some form of mitigation or prevention and be carried out by smaller vehicles.
Right, before we go back, Councillor Lee, you wanted to speak.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Armstrong beat me to it with regards to condition thirteen. If anything, I'd like to see that removed. While I do totally appreciate the normal reason for it and it's a big bugbear of mine having unbound materials, I think unbound materials would actually be far more in keeping the historic aspects of the surrounding area. Every house along that track at the moment has unbound materials and I think this would end up looking quite out of place and the odd stone going on to that track is a fair way from, is it North Hill the road? North Hill. It's not going to cause, I don't believe it's going to cause any issues, so I'd like to see condition thirteen removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you come back on those few points, please?
Yeah, so this is where it gets complicated in terms of what, what we'd be, or what you guys would be considering. You're free to obviously consider the proposal without a, a condition or with a variation of a condition that's been recommended, that's entirely up to you guys and I won't say more than that because that's, that's, that's your job. The management plan in terms of the, the ability to put in, what we could do is put potentially additional wording into the existing condition to cover the construction impact on the, on the, on the track itself, there could be management put in place feasibly and that could be controlled under, under the management plan condition that's already on there with some additional wording, but would be subject to that being part of your resolution.
Thank you. Right, unless anyone else wishes to speak, then I will suggest that Henwood is approved subject to the conditions on page seven to 10, plus any changing in wording that is necessary. Councillor Lee, did you need anything specific there apart from if you take out a condition, surely that makes life more difficult?
I'm not sure what the process would be, but I would like to see that removed if someone could clarify the process for that, if that needs to be taken for a vote or something.
Unless you have any major objection.
The committee can resolve to remove the condition, that's perfectly within your power, and then we'll remove it.
I propose we remove condition thirteen.
Okay, do we have a second of that? We do. Is everyone in favour of actually removing the condition? Gosh, okay, in that case, that condition is removed but the other conditions stay. So I'll go back to saying that Henwood is approved subject to conditions. I think it's a bit late now. All those in favour?
Second.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, seconded. All those in favour? Anyone against? One against, okay.
Abstained.
You're against?
Abstained.
Sorry, can you speak?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay, fair enough. Okay, then the application. Councillor Pepper, have you approved or abstained? Can you put your mic on?
Abstaining.
Okay. So we have two abstentions, one objection and everybody else is in favour, is that correct? In that case, the application is approved. Thank you very much, everyone. I will leave you to look at your planning appeals at your leisure and I will close the meeting. Thank you.